I will call this, uh, meeting to order. Our first item of business is a public hearing on the plan specifications in form of contract for bid number sixteen dash oh one one, Wilson Middle School. Fire alarm, intercom, and clock project. Let the record show that all board members are here for this hearing. The superintendent and the district's administration are recommending approval of the plan specifications in form of contract for bid number sixteen dash oh one one, Wilson Middle School. Fire alarm, intercom, and clock project. I ask Dr. Brechner or designee to quickly review their recommendation. Following the review, we will receive questions from board members. When board members have completed their questions, we will take questions or comments from others who are present. The official board action on the plan specifications in form of contract will be determined during the regular meeting, which is scheduled to fall immediately after the public hearing. Dr. Brechner?
Thank you very much, and we have with us Stacy Pettit, who is going to talk about the Wilson Middle School project.
All right, can you hear me? Okay. Uh, let's talk about Wilson. Uh, basically, we have a project over at Wilson Middle School that involves three different systems at the building, and that includes the fire alarm, intercom, and clocks. Um, within your packet, you have a blown-up version of the floor plan that has it sectioned off, so it might be a little bit easier to read online. But basically, this is an overall floor plan for Wilson Middle School, and all the little dots in the middle of the rooms and down the corridors are the new devices that we're asking to install at the facility. We basically have three systems that we want to work on. We have the fire alarm, the intercom, and the clocks. Um, talking about the fire alarm, um, basically, all three of these, well, going back, the fire alarm, intercom, and clocks, they're all kind of getting to the point of their useful life, and, um, if you want to talk about the fire alarm first, uh, we're, we're starting to see some issues with the existing fire alarm. We've got strobes that aren't syncing up, which can cause seizure, seizures with students and staff. We have multiple rooms that don't have adequate notification in them, and this is based on old codes versus new codes. We have issues with exterior devices having ground faults when it rains, and then we're also running into relay issues that are causing false alarms and trouble alarms throughout the facility. Um, basically, the new system would, we're estimating it'd be about a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars for the new fire alarm system, and we would replace virtually everything in the building that relates to the fire alarm, with the exception of the door hold opens, because we can tie those back in. Moving on to the intercom system, we had a major failure with the intercom system this year, and we've basically temporarily put it back together, hoping that the board will approve this tonight, that we can get a new system within the building. The new system would include new speakers, new cabling, and the head-end equipment, and you would see new speakers and the buttons like that within the classrooms. We're estimating that that portion of the project would be about sixty-eight thousand dollars. If we do move forward with the intercom project, I think our IT folks are gonna seriously look into updating the phone system and the data at the facility as well, because we'll have a lot of the ceilings out, and this is the perfect time for them to update their portions of it. I don't think we have a detailed number on that yet, but we'll have to bring that back to you later. And then moving on to the clocks, we have an array of clocks throughout the facility. Some are hand-changed, some are synced up, so we're looking at updating them as well. We would put analog clocks within all the classrooms and the office and, like, the gymnasium area, and then the digital clock would be down the corridors, because they're a little bit easier to read from distances. That portion of the project is probably gonna be in about the forty-two thousand dollar A preliminary project schedule, if approved tonight, we'll send it out to bid tomorrow. We're looking at a pre-bid meeting on March sixteenth. We'll receive bids on April sixth. We'll award construction at the April twelfth board meeting, and we'll hopefully begin construction as soon, as soon as possible. There may be some work that they can do on weekends and nights before school gets out, but the majority of the work would happen over the summer, and then we'll be substantially complete by July thirty-first. The overall cost estimate for the project is about two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars. It'll be funded through Pebble, and we would be complete by the beginning of the two-thousand-and-sixteen, seventeen school year. Are there any questions?
Board members, if you have questions, this is the time to ask them.
All right.
You did a great job of explaining.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the board about this Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead with our regular meeting. Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mr. Arthur.
Present.
Mr. LaFerla.
Present.
Mr. Kozier.
Present.
Dr. Ogres.
Present.
Ms. Riley.
Present.
Mr. Hanson.
Present.
Mr. Grove.
Present. Let's stand for a moment of silence, and the pledge of allegiance following that.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have Proud of Our Schools and Introductions, Dr. Brechner.
Good evening, board. You see before you a very distinguished group of young men who have represented our school district and their school, Thomas Jefferson, very, very amply this year. Let me tell you, we have invited the Thomas Jefferson High School wrestling team and coaches here tonight to recognize them all for an outstanding season. The hard work of all of these young men has translated into a record-breaking year for the Yellow Jacket wrestlers. We would like to present each of the team members and coaches with a special district keychain as a token of our pride in them. But before I invite head coach August Mans to the podium to introduce the team and coaches, I want to make special presentations to two athletes who earned medals at this year's state wrestling tournament. We're presenting each of them with our district star award for their accomplishment, which is the highest award that our Board of Education presents to students. First of all, let me introduce to you Thomas Jefferson Junior Maguire Mitkif. Join me at the podium. Maguire earned second-place medal at the one-hundred-and-thirteen-pound weight class. Uh, not yet, sit down yet. Diane's gonna be there. And, you undoubtedly know all this from the newspaper, Thomas Jefferson Senior Colton Klingenpil, please join me. We're proud of Colton as a four-time medalist and the twenty-sixteen state champion in the So now, Coach August Mans, we are so proud of your great work with these athletes. Would you come forward to share a few words about the team and these medalists, and to introduce the team, members of the team, so we can present their keychains?
You guys want to stand up, or just stay? All right, go ahead and stand. Uh, you know, last year, I was, I was invited to come up here and talk about the, the team, and, uh, we had a lot of seniors on that team, and we were sixteenth best in the state last year, um, with a lot of seniors. We knew we were gonna have to, uh, have some growing pains this year with a lot of freshmen in the lineup, or freshmen coming in, and, uh, that, those freshmen really did a good job of stepping up, uh, filling in the holes in the lineup. Um, we were fifteen and seven in duels. We were invited, or invited back to the regional duels, which is the top twenty-four teams in the, in the state. Um, we, we beat a couple of the ranked teams, uh, that were ahead of us, just not any of the top eight. Um, we went to, hosted districts this year. Um, we, uh, took our second-biggest, uh, amount of qualifiers to the state tournament with seven. Last year was eight. Um, out of these seven, six of them were one match, or four of them were one match away from meddling. Two of them making the medal stand, like Dr. Brechner said, being in the, in the finals of the Class Three State Tournament. Um, we've earned, we earned enough points to get in the top ten of the state out of sixty-four teams. We're ranked, we were, uh, ended up being ninth in the state tournament, tied for ninth against a, one of the teams that was proj- projected to be a top-three team. Um, we tied with them. So, these guys did a very good job this year of, uh, competing with some of the best in the state and representing Council Plus. Um, nothing but great things for me to say about these guys, so. Um, last time, I guess I'll do a little history lesson. Last time TJ was in the top ten in the, in the state tournament. Uh, Bill, I think you were in high school, nineteen fifty?
Not quite there.
Not, not that quite? Okay. Uh, that was the last time they were in the top ten, and, uh, last time we had two, two, uh, wrestlers in the state finals was nineteen seventy-four. So, a lot of, a lot of history made by, uh, this group of guys this year, so, thank you. All right, uh, in attendance, we have Maguire Mitkif, Dan Benson, Nick Poptart Mitchell, Jacob Jones, Jackson Sharp, Riley Sharp, Seneca Calhoun, Jacob Byers, Cesar Salazar, Jason Salazar, Cameron Baker, Colton Klingenpil, Hunter Allen, and Jacob Axtehl.
Guys, does Coach Mans have permission to shave that beard now, or does he have to keep that for?
They said they want me to keep. Uh, Coach Mitkif and Coach Chouders?
Right over there. A pair of funny photos, you're welcome to come up. Gentlemen, if you'll go with your backs to that, you can board, you can lift your back. There you go. Colton Maguire, would you mind being front and center with your star awards? Thank you. Coaches are in there, don't be shy. All right, I'll take three here. What a great group.
Let me just add something. August didn't, used to have a beard, but he also didn't used to have gray hair.
Same age as Chris, or something.
A youngster. Um, but I, I remember one of the first times I met August was when he had a dream at Thomas Jefferson High School about, "We are going to make wrestling really, really important." And that's when the Bill Smith Wrestling Room came to pass, because August had the idea about, "Let's look at a champion that came from Thomas Jefferson, and then once we look at the champion, let's raise our own." And that has come true. I am honored to have this two years in a row. Congratulations. Thank you for coming to see us.
Thank you.
Congratulations, men and coaches. It's great accomplishment. We're proud of you, and I'm impressed that so many of you gave up a night to come and meet with the board and be honored. So, well done. We'll look forward to next year, too.
Very nice. You're welcome to stay, but if you have something else you want to do, we understand.
Why did no one think you had one there?
This happens to be the evening that we also recognize our Employees of the Month for February, and let me introduce you to two more gentlemen. It's a night of gentlemen tonight. First of all, I want to introduce you to Gary Smith. Gary, would you come up here, please? And let me tell you about Gary. Gary has been with the Council of Schools since two thousand and four, serving at Washington, College View, and now sharing time at the Facilities Maintenance and Custodial Services, Services Office and the Tucker Center. Here is what Gary's nominators from the Tucker Center said about him. "To say that Gary contributes to the collaborative and caring environment at the Tucker Center is a significant understatement. From the moment he walks through the front door, Gary's genuine concern for his coworkers is immediately evident. It's not uncommon for Gary to inquire about something that we might be discussing in our classes as he works in the building. Gary understands that we're all a team, working together to achieve common goals for our students. He leads by example, is proud of his work, and looks for ways to improve the care of the building. He's respectful of the need to do more with less and to be environmentally responsible. Although he may not interact with them frequently, Gary cares a great deal about our Tucker Center students. He demonstrates his care and concern for them in ways that are probably outside of their awareness, by keeping the facility clean and in good condition. He also models good work skills, remains flexible, and communicates effectively. He's truly a pleasure to work with and to show what it means to be part of a team environment." Gary is joined tonight by Tucker Center staff Kyle Forney, Beth Items, Adams, Charme Smith, Jane Hannigan, as well as Facilities and Maintenance Director Stacy Pettit and Custodial Supervisor Brian McAvoy. Wow, he's got a whole team of them.
This one, Patty Pettit.
And Patty Pettit, my goodness. All of Tucker Center came out, and Gary, on behalf of the Board of Education and the Community Ed Foundation, I have a trophy for you. Gary Smith, Support Staff Member of the Month, and a very lucrative gift certificate to go out to dinner to celebrate. Congratulations. And let me tell you about a visitor who has become part of our family, a visitor from Lincoln, Joe Laduke. Joe, come on down. Joe Laduke has been with the Council of Schools since the summer of two thousand and thirteen as our Digital Learning Specialist. Here's what his nominators shared. Joe stepped into a difficult role, role midstream, and he didn't miss a beat. Joe's role as Digital Learning Specialist touches nearly every student, teacher, teacher leader, and building administrator in the district. His knowledge, skill, and tenacity have kept the ship afloat. Recently, his role took yet another turn. The district is piloting a new assessment platform, and Joe took that on with the same can-do attitude. In addition to Joe's primary role, he's been asked to wear a number of other hats. Whether he's been asked to help out on other duties as assigned, he's always stepped up. Joe's willing to help anyone. When asked to assist with the AV in this meeting room, definitely not in his job description, he does so with a smile, always wanting everyone to have a good day. Cheering Joe on tonight are representatives of Teaching and Learning and the Technology Departments, as well as ESC coworkers and his wife Margaret and son Gene. Joe, as our Licensed Staff Member of the Month, I provide you this wonderful trophy and a gift certificate for dinner. Thank you very much to all of these people who make such a difference for us and to you, board members, for recognizing them every month.
Congratulations, Gary and Joe. We're proud of you. Now, we'll continue with the regular board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Aye, move. We approve the agenda as presented.
Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hanson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next is the approval of the minutes of our February twenty-third meeting. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the minutes.
Thank you. Mrs. Riley, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Arthur. Any discussion about the approval of the minutes? We'll proceed to vote. All those say aye.
Aye.
And aye, Rev. And those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Now, we're to our part in our agenda where we have public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to the superintendent's report, student achievement.
We've had a good trimester worth of wonderful reports about good work going on in our school district, and tonight is no different, as we provide you the annual Talented and Gifted Education Report, and we're very fortunate to have a teacher leader here, Rhonda Lefler, to tell us all about TAG.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's our pleasure tonight to share some exciting information with you about opportunities we provide for students who have identified, been identified as talented and gifted, and to spearhead that presentation tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce Rhonda Lefler. She is our K-12 Talented and Gifted Curriculum Specialist.
Thank you so much for having me. Um, I look a little different than Terry McClure, the who you've known for several years, I know. Um, first of all, I guess our message that we'd like to present to you this evening is that our program is a service, it's not a destination. Um, it's a team effort that we provide extended opportunities for learning to our TAG students. They're not just gifted Tuesday and Thursday from ten to ten forty-five, so it takes a collaborative effort from everyone, working with them, to give them what they need. Second of all, TAG strategists work very hard each day to challenge our students and provide enriching learning opportunities. Um, and our third, uh, goal, you could say, of our programming is that we provide unique learning opportunities that extend their learning beyond the core curriculum. I thought the best way to show you, they say a picture is worth a thousand words, so I'm gonna take you with a lot of pictures, a few words, and try to, uh, give you a glimpse what it's like to be inside a TAG classroom in Council of Schools. Our first example is from high school student Emma Preston. She is now in college, I believe. She initiated fundraising efforts within the district, which then contributed to solving a global problem of a need for drinkable water. Through Emma's efforts, uh, they were actually able to build this well in this community in Africa, and they now have fresh drinking water. TAG services are multifaceted. At the elementary level, we have math as push-in and pull-out. I personally am working with a fifth-grade teacher, and we do co-teaching. We also provide enrichment services, where it's student-choice and project-based. At the middle school, students have an opportunity for advanced math classes, seminar, and we are in the process of implementing curric- uh, cluster grouping, which will allow for teachers to then, uh, differentiate, differentiate learning opportunities for students. At the high school, students have AP and dual credit. They have opportunity to select seminars and elective. They have advanced classes, they have online classes, and they have an advisory. An example of TAG strategists, in my opinion, going above and beyond and wanting to provide a service for their students, uh, the middle and high school teachers came to me, and they asked if they could please have underachieving TAG students put into their advisory for next year, because they felt if they had an opportunity to meet with them at an earlier level in their, uh, education career, they might be able to reach them and make more of a difference with those students. This is another example of an opportunity for unique learning that happens in CB schools. Ally Sorenson, who is a member of the Student of Iowa Youth Congress, here you see her talking on the phone with a legislator, and we are so lucky, Ally is here this evening. She's gonna share a little bit about her journey as a TAG student.
Good evening. So, there are five identified foundations of an advanced placement experience. These classes allow students to get more, to get hands-on, to get involved, to get support, and to get to know themselves. These are precisely the reasons why I love AP coursework. More importantly, however, these are the experiences and tools that I believe every person should leave high school with. My time and talent spent in those types of classes have taught me to ask questions, involve myself in difficult conversations, and analyze my own learning. Each of these are vital skills that will support my college education. But advanced placement and dual enrollment courses are difficult. They require an entirely different level of thought, and their coursework is difficult. The Talented and Gifted Program in my school offers a distinct sanctuary for like-minded students. This space creates a community where intellect and passion and normalcy collide, and our TAG room is a hub of intelligence that provides a space for students to spend their vulnerable moments between challenging courses and activities. Today, I serve on the State of Iowa Youth Advisory Council as a Health Committee member and bill sponsor, and I'm the only person southwest of the Des Moines metro area to be elected to our nineteen-person council. I travel to Des Moines on a monthly basis to lobby for the issues that Iowa's youth care about. I even wrote House File Five Eighty-Four, a comprehensive public radon testing bill. Unfortunately, my bill died three weeks ago in a House Subcommittee. Of course, I was disappointed, but I cannot begin to tell you the lifelong lessons that I have learned while serving on SIAC. My service to this council and this opportunity to pursue, to pursue my dreams would have never come into fruition without the support of Mrs. Steinmetz in my TAG community. My sophomore year of high school, I learned that over four hundred teenagers are homeless in my community on any given night. That fact broke my heart, and with the guidance of Mrs. Steinmetz and my fellow TAG students, I was able to run a two-part fund and awareness campaign to bring attention to youth homelessness and youth emergency services. I am proud to say that we donated over fifteen hundred dollars to this cause. Through this experience, I not only learned what it means to be an active member of a conscious community, but I also gained valuable skills in organization, communication, and social leadership. Today, I patiently await a hopefully positive admissions letter from Georgetown and the American University of Washington, D.C. I am confident that this is a reality for me because of my TAG community. I am so entirely grateful for my experiences with these people and the everlasting support of my amazing TAG teacher, Mrs. Steinmetz. My high school career has been made distinctly unique by the profound impacts of challenging courses in my intimate TAG environment. These resources are expensive for school districts, and they require highly educated and specialized faculty. However, I can say with utter confidence that they cultivate a real culture of intellect and community, and will undoubtedly provide a perfect launchpad towards higher education for countless students. Thank you.
Ally, thank you.
Yes, please. I think you can hear her passion, and, you know, if we could instill anything in students, a passion for what become, comes after their time with us in CB schools, we've, we've met our goal.
Did you get your letter?
From, not yet.
Not yet.
Patiently waiting. Um, this is another ex-
This is another example of expanded learning opportunities at the high school level, and I'm sorry, I don't know the student name, taking an Iowa Western Community class, an Intro to Astronomy. Another example that I know, and again, I don't have a slide to go with it, but from TJ, a student was very passionate about date and, I can't think of how she termed it, but abuse, basically. Abuse of, that's occurring in dating among teenagers and how widely accepted it is. She created a very nice presentation that she is then taking to different classrooms at her school, trying to just make students aware that it's not acceptable, it's not appropriate, here are some things that you could do. So I think we're accomplishing very nice things. So, unique programming learning opportunities for students. This is Claire Wilder. She had a vision, she loves art, and she used her passion for art in her concern for school climate. She had an idea, she presented it to her administration, and created this mural that was then, she painted, on the wall at Abraham Lincoln for positiveness and motivation at her school. Elementary students work independently. Here you can see them working on a zoonomy project. They worked independently on the project, then they met with peers to share their persuasive letters. Their letter was a letter to the Zoo Board of Directors, trying to convince the zoo that their zoo would be the best one that should be built in the metro area, should it get a new zoo. And then after meeting with peers, they learned how to critique and accept criticism, where they went back and revised, and then presented to large, large group their whole presentation. Here you see them self-assessing afterwards. Again, they would self-assess and then peer-assess using a rubric. Here you see Jessica Hipnar. She is designing ceiling tile with college logos to promote advanced education opportunities. As you can see, TAG services in CB schools, they're multifaceted. We work very hard to challenge and enrich the learning of our students. Top left-hand corner, first Lego League, first-year team got invited to the state competition. Bottom corner, TAG students at the elementary level are getting hands-on job experience, serving as bank tellers. This is a collaboration of students working at several schools on robotics, using the one-to-one chromes, working on engineering, design, problem-solving, decision-making, being collaborative workers and part of a team. We like students to reflect on their learning, and this, I felt, you know, from the student words, more powerful than my own. I learned that I'm a hard worker, and I won't give up until I get something right. When I find problems, I find a way to work around it. Some other student reflections while working on the robotics unit. I really, I would try a different approach to building the robot, so they learn that there's not just one right way, they can look at it from multiple perspectives. I would use my time more wisely, which is an excellent thing to learn at this age, hopefully carries over to their high school and college careers. So as you can see, the TAG program is a service. The strategists work really hard to challenge and enrich student learning, and we really try to provide unique learning opportunities for Council of Love students. I thank you for the opportunity to meet with you this evening and to show you just a glimpse of what it's like to be in our classrooms.
Thanks for your presentation. Does the Board have any questions for Wanda?
I have a question on, just how do you, how do we, at the senior high level, keep track of all the options, promote all the options when there's, when there's AP classes and seminar and, and just all these diverse options? How do you get kids honed in on one or another? Or do we get them in a TAG seminar if they don't know what they want to do, but they know that they want to do something, and then they find out what that is? Just, what's that process like?
Well, I think a lot of it starts at the middle school, honestly. There is a good communication between the TAG strategists at middle school to high school. We are working on bridging the gap in rigor between middle school, high school. The teachers collaborate, they have arranged a parent evening to let parents know and inform parents the opportunities available at high school. They also went into the middle schools to talk about programming options that would be available when they went to high school as freshmen. And then that's one of the reasons that the TAG strategists ask that TAG students and underachieving TAG students be assigned to their advisory, so that they could meet them at freshman and help guide them along the way. And I will tell you, the two TAG strategists at high school are phenomenal, Sarah Steinmetz and Elizabeth Bush. Yep. Yeah?
Other questions?
I just have a comment for next year's report. There were a couple of grid reports from last year and from this year, and I was hoping that next year, when you do this, could we have a little bit longer, so we can see not just what we did last year?
We're longitudinal.
Yeah, just a little bit longer, you know, three, five years, whatever. I'd like to see what the, what the trend is on that, as opposed to just from year to year, to see how well we're doing in case we have a bad year.
And that happens. You know, the average student, their yearly growth on this standardized testing measured in terms of standard score, we would hope 12 to 15-point growth, but with our TAG kids, we are looking, you know, anywhere from 17 to 22. Some of the math students grew 50-some points in their learning from last year, you know, from fourth grade to fifth graders. So, we, you know, it's important we know what that information looks like, so that we can continue that growth.
Right. And it'd be nice to see that if they find something that's really working in an area that you can recognize that and expand it. So, that's all I had.
Other comments, questions?
How are TAG students identified? Is it through assessment scores, or is that just one measure?
Again, we have multifaceted identification. This year, school year, the elementary strategists will go into second-grade classrooms, and they will be doing some planned experiences using the Bertie Kingor KOI materials, along with teacher recommendations, and then their second-grade IO assessment scores, and then TAG committees kind of look at the overall child and decide. And the ultimate question is, what are the needs of the child, and how can those needs best be met? Do they need extension beyond the core? Because not all gifted students do. Some of them, the core curriculum meets their needs and challenges them, but we have many that need extension beyond. So, and we also have acceleration. We can do subject acceleration for those students who are highly gifted in one area, such as math or literacy, and we can, we also do do grade-level acceleration, too. I have a couple of students who actually skipped second grade, they went from first to third grade.
Thank you.
I want to give a shout-out to two other Yeah. Talented and gifted facilitators, Carol and Carol. Carol Maddox and Carol Stotts are working with many of our students at the elementary grade levels. Thank you for being here.
Rhonda did a fantastic job with her very first presentation. We have, we have very, very, we are blessed to have very, very talented teacher leaders in our school district, and she put together this whole presentation tonight and collected all the stories from students, and I appreciate the work that she's done. I would also just kind of, to put a punctuation point on tonight's presentation, that in many school districts across the state, services for talented and gifted students are falling by the wayside due to inadequate funding from the state. And in our school district, we've continued to invest in services for talented and gifted students. All of our schools, our elementary schools, our middle schools, and our high schools have access to a highly skilled, highly qualified TAG strategist. In our Area Education Agency, there is next to almost zero TAG support at our AEA because of reduced funding. In many rural parts of the, of our, of our AEA, there is basically no service for those students. So we are very blessed and very fortunate, and we need to continue the best we can advocating for adequate funding, so that we can maintain these high-quality programs with highly skilled teachers in the classroom. So, thank you.
Thanks, Cory.
Thank you. That sounds good. I noticed, if my memory is correct, that we have a higher percentage of our students at the high school level in TAG than the other two levels. And if they're doing these kind of individual projects, I can understand that. And my suggestion would be, maybe we ought to be doing this with all our kids, not just the TAG kids, these individual projects. And maybe we are, to some extent. But, I don't know, it's just a bias of mine, that if we're going to make education truly meaningful to everybody, there has to be some ownership in some projects, and you TAG students are doing that. And thank you, Ally, for your presentation. It was well done. Any other comments? Okay, we'll go on to the next legislative update.
It seems rather appropriate to move from a call for funding to hear about legislature.
I don't want to be any sort of a Debbie Downer tonight, but I am going to give you a little bit of an update of the happenings at the State House. And I will note, Ally, that I had members of the media call me about your radon bill. So you were making, you were making an impression with your draft bill, and appreciate that you have a future in, maybe in politics, definitely in social change. So, congratulations on that. We are, I think about the ninth week of the legislature, and so wanted to just update you on the statewide one-cent sales tax for school infrastructure. And good news is, the extension of the sales tax is definitely being talked about this year, which has been a goal of ours for several years from, at the direction of you and the Board. The bad news is, the governor's bill is definitely tying any sort of an extension or, or increase in the one-cent sales tax to water quality. He has, they have, in the latest bill, it's included information on student equity and transportation equity, but it also does use some of the funding for water quality, which UEN and, I believe that we oppose that. But the state supplemental aid continues to just be a discussion. There is a joint Subcommittee that is supposed to be considering this in order for it to move ahead. There are still the three rates of increase. I don't know if you had a chance to see the Iowa Association of School Boards put together an infographic that's being distributed, that has been distributed to the legislators. And one thing that was new, and it, it helps illustrate the investment in the 2%, 2.45% that the governor proposes, and then the 4% that, that UEN and others are really still supporting and encouraging. The, at the 2% level, which is what the House bill projects as an increase in our state supplemental aid, would be an increase of 129 per student. At the next rate up, it'd be $158 increase in the amount per student. And at the 4% preferred increase in state supplemental aid, it'd be $250, $258 per student increase. And if you look at it as $1.43 per day, per child, again, we talk about Dr. Vorthman investment in children, we, I think we would all agree that that would be an important investment and seemingly doable with the state's increase in revenues. So this, this is just another way of looking at what we've been trying to promote and encourage, not only a fair increase in state supplemental aid, but a timely one, and we're well past the February deadline for that to have, that decision to have been made. Couple of key dates for us to look forward to, March 19th and April 2nd, our new dates for the Chamber Legislative Coffees. They, they were modified slightly this year. Again, 9:00 to 10:30 a.m. at Wilson Middle School. It is very helpful to have people stand up and introduce themselves as advocates for education. Dr. Bruckner was pleased, I know, that several of our parent advocates have been there and have introduced themselves as such. I think that our legislators definitely know that there's a coalition of folks who want them to be mindful and timely in their conversations about education. The final date for any House bill to be reported out of a Senate committee or vice-versa, any Senate bills out of the House committees is March 11th. So we've kind of got a flurry of activity coming here this week, and then, although there are some exceptions to that, appropriations, ways and means and the like. But we can look forward to several, several things occurring over the next week or so. I believe that you all received the UEN legislative updates, mostly on Thursday. We did get an update from the Iowa Association of School Boards today on, on the SAVE Fund and the activity there, but it is a lot of the same, and I think we're all just eagerly awaiting their decision, so that you, as Board members, discuss the budget here in April and finalize it for the coming year, that we have some good numbers to work with. What questions might I or others who've been engaging in conversations with legislators answer for you?
The UEN update is very helpful for understanding, you know, progress or lack of progress, but they state their position, but don't state an explanation for their position on the bills, and, which would be helpful for me, anyway. I don't know if it'd be helpful for anyone else, but they publicize that anywhere else, or?
Or does anybody know?
I think they do. Maybe the first time they put a position out, they talk about it, and we can get you that information, Mr. LaFerla, for sure. I know one of the things that they try to do is to be brief, because you only have somebody's attention for a few seconds, and they want to try to get all they can into that information. But if you, if you ever give me any hints about what kind of things that you would like some clarification on, we can get that for you, for sure. We kind of feel, Diane and I have talked about, we kind of feel like we're coming back and telling you the same thing we told you the last month, but we are telling you the same thing we told you last month. Exactly. We want the water bill, the, we want support for water, but we want that separate from support for education. We don't think 2% or 2.45% is sufficient. We think 4% is, and legislators have said, in no uncertain terms, you will not get 4%. Okay, we're going to have to do some cuts, then. There's no chance we won't have to make some cuts, if that's what it is. So, we just sent out this afternoon our first email to all of our staff, just informing them that if the conditions do not change in the next month, we will begin a process related to next year and the year after that will result in cuts. We throw around from $4.5 million to $6 million. I keep trying not to say those numbers out loud, because they're very scary to anybody. We have pledged we will not reduce anybody involuntarily for next year, but we can't make that pledge for the year after if we don't get better funding from the state. Period, the end. Anytime you go to a state coffee, you're told that there are a lot of other things that are important, and I don't disagree with that, but we expect our legislators to support education. Public education is one of their most important jobs, so. So we're, hopefully won't be coming back in a month and telling you the same thing.
I have one question regarding the state penny and the water. Are they suggesting taking some of the funding from the state penny and putting it towards water, or have the fund simply be the same bill with two funding sources in the bill?
It would take a portion of the revenues, the increase in revenues, to the SAVE Fund and siphon it off to water quality. So the, the amount in this, dedicated towards school infrastructure would be capped at 10 million?
Growth.
A growth of 10 million a year.
And one of the major objections to that is that the water, the education support through the SAVE Fund was voted, approved by voters in every single county, and they did not, when they approved that, suggests that it should go partially to water at some point in the discussion, so. That's part of the reason that people have such a high fever about that.
One of the other provisions in the current bill is that, that if we had any improvements over $1 million, that those would be subject to a revenue purpose statement and a majority vote, or 60% approval by our resident voters. And so, we'd be back in the same boat as what we required And so, we'd be back in the same boat as what we require now with a bond issue, and that's a super majority to pass any kind of a investment, if you will, in our, in our improvements to our infrastructure. So it would be taking us backward in terms of the time it would take and the approval levels it would take in order for us to do improvements. And a million dollars for a project is pretty common, more than a million dollars is pretty common. For us to make the kinds of improvements we need, for example, at Wilson and Kern Middle Schools in our district.
I noticed that your former district is having big meetings about what to cut. And Westside, across the river?
Not my former district. It's my husband's former district.
Husband's, okay.
Yes. Yeah, Westside is, in Omaha, is wrestling with a similar issue. They have to cut $4 million and they've decided to cut 18 teaching positions. And we may be there next year. We, we may bring some reductions to the board this year, but if we do, they will only be through attrition. But that won't be true next year.
Unless things change at the State House.
Absolutely.
Right. Always hold out hope. Any other questions for Diane?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're to our resolutions, part of the agenda. The first one is approval of plans, specifications, and form of contract for bid number 16-011, Wilson Middle School Fire Alarm Intercom and Clock Project. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll move to approve the plans, specifications, and form of contract for bid number 16-011, Wilson Middle School Fire Alarm Intercom and Clock Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? We've got our questions answered. Okay, proceed to call the roll. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next up is some policy reviews, approval of the first reading. 401, general personnel policies. 412, personnel complaints, grievances, and termination process. 413, appraisal of licensed personnel. 421, suspension of personnel. 429, classified employee wage and compensation. 425, appropriate use of computers, computer network, and internet employees. And a new 432, employee use of social media, electronic messaging. Is there a move to have, to approve the first reading of those policies?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the first reading of the policies as presented.
A second, please?
Second.
Second, thank you. Further discussion by the board?
The sites that are already created, what are we doing with those? Our classroom sites, or that are already created by district personnel?
Is that related to the new policy on social media?
Yes.
Related to the requirement that they share those administration rights. We are creating, the committee has recommended creating a form that each building would ask members of the staff to fill out if they have, if they have already an existing account or if they're starting a new one. And so it will be a process for us to collect all those, but we feel it's an important one, so it's one that we're pursuing in, in relation to this policy.
How did the policy come about in regards to crossing over personal social media sites with affiliation of your position in the district?
I'm not sure I understand the question, Jill.
So there's some information in the policy that talks about personal social media sites of district employees will be monitored by district staff. I kind of have just a few questions.
Sure. Well, between Dave and I, I think we can help address those questions, or if there need to be some modifications, we can certainly do so.
I, I believe the language, and I don't have the policy in front of me, is, can be monitored. It's not uncommon for employers to check social media presence for prospective employees. And the same would be true if we heard or discovered an illegal or disparate posting on somebody's personal account. Our, our staff is, and has been, under the, under our, we, we split really two policies. The, the computer and internet use policy and the new social media policy apart. The previous language, I'm going to paraphrase, was something to the effect of employees are responsible for postings, whether public or private. And, and that language had been in the policy for some time.
Employees of the Council of the Community School District are expected to use social media in a legal, responsible, safe, and ethical manner at all times, whether on personal or district-owned devices.
Correct. And that implies that employees of the district are, whether they are at work or in their role as a public employee, responsible for the things they say, that they be accurate, legal, fair representations of their work in the district, and don't violate FERPA, HIPAA, SIPA, COPA, et cetera.
Okay.
Is, is some of your, I guess, fear that the district could decide what it approves is?
Appropriate outside of district time.
That would not necessarily be illegal, but maybe we wouldn't agree with it.
Not appropriate, and that it would be a reflection upon them as an employee. And I, I just have some concern about that because I think people should have a right to their personal life outside of their job. And if they're afraid of, I don't know if I should post that because my company might see that as inappropriate because I'm a teacher in the district.
Somewhat taking away their freedom of speech.
Right, to have a social media account, knowing that it may not be inappropriate, or illegal, or violating conduct. I just have some concerns about that.
I, I think that somebody who would raise an issue with a post like that would have to be very careful in considering the free speech and right to expression of any individual about any topic. Politics would be a good example.
Sure.
And, and would, would never ask somebody to take down something that was simply opinion. I believe the posts that this refers to are those things that might fall into that gray area where personal student information is being posted, or something disparaging about a student, a staff member of the district, et cetera. That's certainly the intent.
So the intent would be work-related posts?
Exactly.
When I read the policy, it made me assume that it was both. Personal outside representation, and I don't know how everyone else read the policy or interpreted it.
I had a little bit of both. I was concerned about how personal is personal as opposed to what's related back to the school.
The way I took it, it was posting on a personal device, work-related subjects. So I mean, it was just a matter of, we want to make sure that whether they're working or whether on a district device, or a home device, or personal device, that they're following those guidelines.
And whether the origin of that post be their personal phone or a work, a work-issue device.
That's the way I read the policy.
That there would be no difference in their responsibility to be ethical and legal in their posts.
Right.
And the descriptors are legal, responsible, safe, and ethical. Your political beliefs are legal, responsible, safe, and ethical. Calling out the superintendent on the Facebook may be legal.
Inappropriate.
I would s-
Probably isn't safe.
I would suggest that the most often posted, or the, the type of post that's most often results in some sort of counseling from a supervisor are those party pictures that, that may include images of alcohol or something like that, that just really aren't appropriate, where a supervisor might say to a staff member, "I'm worried about the content of the post." Because it, it is representing something that is...
But it's not illegal.
Not, no.
And it's on their own time, and they can post it. But it may cause some concern for their job. Is that what we're implying? This is my concern.
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
Adults have lives outside of their jobs, and if they post a picture that they're at a party drinking alcohol, they shouldn't post that because it may cause concern.
Well, there, there is context there as well. You know, it would be hard to make a blanket or generic statement about, about such a post that might be completely appropriate, and we've all seen ones that are not.
Correct. And I think everyone has good judgment, but I would be concerned a teacher couldn't post a picture outside on their own work time or during Christmas break having drinks. That's concerning to me.
I guess one of the things that I see in the, in that sentence that you read is, at the end, you know, it says the district's free to view and monitor to the same extent as the general public.
Right.
So if it, if it is posted online and it's viewable by the general public, and it can be damaging to the district, I do, I mean, I see cause for concern both ways.
And who determines if it's damaging, or, you know?
Right.
True, could, could people use that way to get rid of a teacher because they don't like him, because they posted it? I do see, it says, "Employees may not post images on a social media, on any social media of coworkers without coworkers' consent unless the image is in a group work setting." But I could see what if two, what if a group goes out and they are at, not, I mean, since none of our teachers ever, you know, spend time together outside of school. You know, how, how is that interpreted? Is it one, one teacher gets mad that they were included in the photo? And then they come and they file a grievance against it, and what's our recourse, and how do we handle that internally? Is any of that set in place by this? Or is this just saying, "Hey, we wrote this because we don't want to have horrible things happen, and we see teachers post things that have been horrible. We've had some nasty issues in the district over texting and emailing and things, and so we want to have some sort of controls of that."
Anything that might be done related to consequences or so on and so forth would fall under our employee supervision practices, which would, would require a number of people to review such discipline and consequences, and, you know, at first, the content of the material at all. And it, like anything else in the district that, you know, involves personnel action, the final authority is the superintendent. So I think there's a lot of common sense in, in practice along the way in our personnel procedures to prevent things that are, you know, just, just clearly out to get you.
Well, I think this is a good reason why we have two readings of a policy.
Agreed.
My sense would be that maybe you and your team and our lawyers ought to look at this again and see if there's better wording to allay Jill's concerns and some others.
I think we need to ask for suggestions because our lawyers have looked at this.
They have.
This is model policy. This has been actually vetted more than almost any policy we've ever brought you before. So we'll take suggestions. There is no goal in here to get somebody. The goal is to say probably very similar things to teachers and employees and superintendents and assistant superintendents that we would say to students, "Don't do silly things. Think before you post something on..." I mean, it's the same thing, advice we give to our children. It's the same advice that employers, that college professors give to teacher candidates. Go look at your Facebook page. Take out things that you don't want your prospective employers to see because they will look for those. So we, I would be very willing to take suggestions that you might have in looking this over in the next week or so, if you just give me some ideas. But we've had, I can't remember all the different groups, our attorneys, it's modeled after model policy, which we get from IASB or SAI, so.
The technology lead team, obviously, our legal counsel, and then the policy review committee. So, lots of eyes. I'd have to suggest it's perfect, though, at all, so.
I have a question at the bottom. It references back to 401 and 425. What's, what's 519 cross-reference with this policy? Is that just our basic guidelines, or?
Diane's gonna look those up. I know that 425 is the employee use of the internet and network resources policy.
Right, and 401 is general personnel policies, which is right here. I didn't know what 519 was.
Exactly. And I'm sure that cross-reference refers to, you know, what happens if there's a violation, you know, those procedures that are in place.
Be helpful to have maybe a breakdown of what the prior policy was and how they are related in comparison to this, Jill?
Maybe, yeah.
Well, 401 and 425 is crossed off, because I, because I read what's crossed off to figure out what we're changing, and a lot of that has been shunted to the bottom.
But then maybe tied to-
To make a new policy.
Tied to the, you know, employee policy, you know, employee handbook.
We could provide the, what is the current version of policy 425, the employee use of the internet and network.
It's in our packet.
That's the revised, what's in your packet is-
That's what we're approving tonight, or?
It's part of what we're looking at tonight.
Okay, you see, okay, you see both.
To answer your question, 519 is child abuse and dependent adult abuse reporting, and that was a cross-reference suggested by our attorney.
Okay.
And you might realize that we have dealt with employees that have used social media inappropriately with students. That's a reference. That's not a question about whether or not you can do it or not. We know you can't do that. Doesn't mean people don't do it. So I'm, I would ask any board member, if you have better ideas on wording that would make you feel more comfortable, please, please tell us. And we'll read through it again, but it's, it's really gone through about everybody we can think of to go through. So we are very eager to hear new suggestions. And the goal of this is not at all to catch anybody at all. And people would not be fired for one inappropriate picture on the internet, but we might say, "Hey, think next time." And we might put that in writing. But one problem won't result in termination.
I guess I just have concerns that some perceptions of what model responsible and appropriate conduct to one person's opinion may be different than another as to what's being posted, both at school and away from school. The district expects its employees to model responsible and appropriate conduct both at school and away from school. I expect that, too. But what they post on social media may be somebody else's different perception of what may be safe or appropriate.
Any further comments on this policy? Brave new world we're in, huh? Okay, here ain't no further discussion. Let's call the roll on this. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
No.
Ms. Riley?
No.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes, and the motion carries. We'll review this again at the next meeting, obviously. Now we have approval of the consent agenda, which includes business items, approval of final payment for Franklin Elementary School, personnel action, claims and accounts. Is there approval for that consent agenda?
Yeah, I will move approval of the consent agenda.
Second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please take the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes, and the motion carries. Bid resolved that a closed session is provided?
We need a motion with vote first. For a closed session, we need to make the motion and vote on it before we can resolve to do it.
You have to vote to go in a closed session.
Okay.
I move that a closed session, as provided by, in section 21.5, parentheses 1, parentheses I of the open meetings law, be conducted to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual has requested a closed session. Second.
Any further discussion on that motion? Call the roll, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes. Motion carried. After the closed session, we will return to open session and adjourn the meeting.